This meeting of the City Council now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for life. We thank you for your blessings on our great city. We just pray that you'll give wisdom today to the councilman, Lord, to the mayor and his administration and the decisions they have to make. We just thank you again for just giving us the blessings that you've given us, for making this city what it is. And God, we promise to give you the praise and the glory for all the good things you're gonna do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting on June the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of June the 15th through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I don't see anybody here from the mayor's office, so we go to unfinished business. We have none today. Number nine is, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 201 Oakley Drive in District Two. Deborah Watts McCormick, Ernestine Fuller Tillis, Cusse Federal Savings and Loan, Household Finance Corporation of Alabama, and Trans American Financial Services Incorporated being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. Based on recent improvements to this property, we're asking that the council delay any action on this for 30 days.
Mr. President, based on the Building Department's recommendation, I make a motion that we table this for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement nuisances on property located at 201 Springdale Road in District Two. Marvin Wayne Wright, Veterans Administration, and the Exchange Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started working this case in September 2010. Mr. Wright was supposed to be here today. He appears to be stuck in kind of a quandary of what to do with this property. He's trying to sell it. Unfortunately, we've been up and down with this property for a couple of years now. And it's right across the street from one that we just requested 30-day table, where obviously some improvements are being made. This particular property is not secure. Kids are going in and out. He is an out-of-town property owner. You know, I'm sorry for the situation he finds himself in, but we need to abate the nuisance, and I'm asking the council today for a resolution to do that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Brian, is this a possibility we could have by just looking at that?
We'll crunch the numbers. Houses in Oakley Estates are getting up around 50 years old, and they were cheaply built when they were built.
No kidding.
Everything is slab-on-grade, which is not necessarily a problem. But they really stretch the span limits on the general construction. So we'll look at it. We've, I think we've done maybe one or two rehabs in the community there. This one, unfortunately, so much damage to the interior of the house, it's pretty much been stripped.
Oh, okay.
And so we're not going to invest in exterior rehab if the inside needs too much.
Right.
But we will look at it.
Okay. And I'll comment later on as to why I asked that question, because we have a meeting upstairs that deals with some issues. But anyway.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of it?
Ready to vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah.
Anybody move?
Yeah, most of them say aye.
We did, and we were in the process of some discussion.
We were discussing.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Harris moved and Avery seconded it.
Excuse me?
Those in favor to adopt, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11, the nuisances on property located at 318 Springdale Road have been abated. Therefore, there's no action necessary by the council. 12, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of assessing nuisance abatement lien on property located at 1107 Stillman Avenue in District One. Brenda Jolly Chambliss and the estate of Wendell Leon Jolly being the last known owners. This is for demolition, and the amount is $7,974.71. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. President, I thought this was asked to be tabled because they're in the process.
It is, and this was actually a rehab, not a demolition.
Okay. But they are making?
Well, she's making payments. I don't know if you remember Wendell Jolly?
Yeah, we did.
Very colorful gentleman.
Yeah, we know.
Wendell passed away a couple of weeks ago, and his sister is handling the affairs that he left behind, and this is one of them. But she's making payments. This is a rehab that the city did on Stillman.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion, and I move that we table indefinitely.
Second.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution indefinitely, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
13, our final public hearing is an ordinance adopting 2009 International Fire Code. This amends City Code Section 50-61 through 50-64 regarding regulations and safeguards of life and property from hazardous conditions. It also provides for the issuance of permits and collection of associated fees. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading. The council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, since there's no opposition to this, and I'm not sure what we're gonna do next week, it's not that we don't have anything on the agenda, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just routine, I think. We passed this thing about three or four different weeks here, and there's no additional cost to the public per se as far as the, I think, one of the things I was mainly concerned about with these in-house sprinkling systems that they require, and that's just not in that, so we're okay.
I'd just, I'd like to ask the chief, just for my own personal knowledge, it says there are key boxes where you need key boxes. I know we have a Pacific building in Gaston that we go to about two or three times a week, it seems like. That's, nothing ever happens. It's over on with the federal building. Would that be one that would need a key box for y'all to get in?
Federal property is a lot different than our government building. They usually have security guards coming over there to help just get in that building. It would be able to have key boxes on that building. And they require an ordinance on all new construction have not key boxes on their buildings that we have to do. Then we'd be pretty comfortable building that we respond to. That's something we're working toward, but again, it's a federal building. We have very little relation to federal buildings.
How many calls do you actually make every week, do you know, to the same location?
At the federal building?
No, just any locations in Gaston where you can't, you have to wait on the key holder?
You know, that varies from a real to a building weekly. Particularly, most of the buildings we respond to that are multi-announced in America, that's another factor that affects the availability. Particularly does have a not clock there.
Okay, that cleared that up for me. Thank you, chief.
Anything else? Okay, 14 is a resolution. What do we need to move?
Public hearings. Oh, you suspended the rules.
I suspended the rules, yeah.
Yeah, you did.
We do have a motion in second to adopt the ordinance. Those in favor to adopt, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Lady Bass Anglers Association. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held September 6th through the 8th, and the amount is $6,500. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Jones Blair Walrath Tucker. This is for the engineering design services associated with Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge Replacement over Black Creek. The amount is $86,274.91. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We're gonna finally get that bridge fixed, Ben, so you don't have to go around anymore. I've been worrying about my half for 15 years, and now it's going out. Well, see, my half is good, and your half is bad. But mine's the front part. Got big holes in it.
Is there any more discussion?
No. We're ready.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business. Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing tip funds for the expenditures related to the fish market restaurant.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passes for you.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is to replace that, actually repair the boardwalk where the fish market is moving. So we're looking forward to that. I understand that within a week or so now, they'll be opening up and have a seating capacity of about 250. It's gonna be a whole new restaurant. About 45 jobs are related to that restaurant, so we're real pleased that you decided to stay in Gaston.
Any other discussion?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. A resolution, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider resolution authorizing new maintenance agreement for a fingerprint system with NEC solutions for $523 per month, budgeted for $7,444.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
They move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is for fingerprints that go from here all the way to the top. Chief, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item to consider today for new business. It's a resolution authorizing the street right-of-way deed for the purposes of the new access road between East Chestnut and East Broad. I'd make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, we've discussed this in previous weeks, but again, this is, as it relates to the construction work that's going on on East Broad Street. And again, this is a new access road between East Chestnut and East Broad, so a lot of progress in that area.
Exactly where is that going, Ben?
This access road will be right behind the New Jacks on the old Goodwill block.
Right behind the New Jacks?
Behind Jacks.
Behind the New Jacks?
Yes.
From East Chestnut to East Broad.
You know what, Jack's going up right there across from Ronnie Watkins.
Are we gonna annul that street to say, oh, and tear down?
Yes, sir, it's, it's in the.
And so this is just, it's coming back this way, then?
It'd be parallel, yeah.
Would it be parallel to that street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an item, a resolution authorizing agreement between the city of Gaston and Bill Avery to perform at Moss Glosser Amphitheater as part of our summer concert series on July the 6th. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is the, this is the first of our summer concert series that will be held at the amphitheater, and Bill Avery will be performing there on July 6th.
Is that the one ahead to the first Friday?
Correct. It's the one ahead of the first Friday.
It is, that's the first Friday.
It's a free concert, and this will be, I guess, the second one we've had this summer. And I don't know how many more we got scheduled. Maybe it's a free concert at the amphitheater, it's always real nice.
It's at 9 o'clock, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Not a problem.
No.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider it. And this is a resolution authorizing a banking agreement with Wells Fargo Bank. And I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is just our normal banking business. This is a three-year contract. We're now banking with Wells Fargo, and it's just a continuation. We did get some proposals in, but again, Wells Fargo was the best proposal based on our needs.
All the local banks were given an opportunity to bid on this, so I think there's about nine banks.
Yeah, it was nine banks, yeah.
This was the best proposal we got.
Out of the nine, six of them didn't respond technically. One did call in, but five of them, no response at all. One did call, but we only had three that actually responded, and Wells Fargo was the best of those three.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, there's one more item that's not new business, but we overlooked early, I mean, the mayor's office has got here with a proclamation, so.
Yeah, we didn't overlook him, he was late.
Well, I was trying to be nice, but anyway, he's here with it now.
Short notice.
Is Sherri Duramus here?
Yes, she is.
She's right there.
Come on up, Sherri.
Whereas the city of Gaston is proud to welcome all former students of Central and Carver High School as they celebrate their alumni reunion number nine, Thursday, July 5th through Friday, July 6th, 2012. And whereas it is fitting and appropriate that the citizens of this community recognize these two high schools' vital contributions to the area by providing outstanding education for many years, and whereas in honor of this historic occasion, a get reacquainted luncheon at Gaston Convention Hall, Thursday, July 5th at 12 noon, at Harold J. Watson's reunion parade on Tuscaloosa Avenue, Thursday, July 5th at 4:00 p.m., the Wildcat Party on the Carver Grounds, Thursday, July 5th at 6:00 p.m., business meeting in Carver Gymnasium, Friday, July 6th at 12 noon, and reunion dance at Gaston Convention Hall, Friday, July 6th, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Now, therefore, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the city of Gaston, does hereby proclaim July 5th and July 6th as Central and Carver High School reunion days in our city, and plays to do all within our power to make you and your families visit a most pleasant and memorable experience.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. President?
Yes, comments.
On behalf of the former alumni of Central and Carver High School, I am honored to accept this proclamation, and I wish to express our appreciation to the city of Gaston and Mayor Gotten for all of the assistance that's been given to us in past years and was being given to us for this year also. Thank you.
Department reports, committed boards, are there any? Remarked by the mayor and the council? Ben?
Yes, sir.
You want to start?
Absolutely. This may be a little bit late announcing, but maybe somebody will pick up on it if they're watching this afternoon before 6:00. But tonight at 6:00, we will be having a town hall meeting at Kewanas on the mountain at Knocklula Park. Our chief, John Crane, will be there, and Captain Regina May will be there. We're gonna be talking about scams, we're gonna be talking about neighborhood watch programs, and things that are going on, criminal activity that's going on in the past and the future. As you know, we're having a lot of this going on right now, so we're trying to cover that, get as many people there as we can, and let them find out what they can do. Anyway, be sure and be there at 6:00. Come on.
I'm gonna call on District One now. We've had a report this morning from Walt Higgins. He did a good, he did a good job, but Walt has not lost his expertise in talking.
We called up on clarity, though, didn't we?
Yes.
Absolutely called up.
We got clarity this morning. He did a good job.
He's a good man.
Walt was a great council person, and he's got a good replacement.
Well, thank you, sir. I'll tell you this, that Walt Schuh has a good memory. He was just relating to things just right off the top, right off, right off the top of his head, you know, all of the things that happened to him, with him during his 10, eight years, you know, in council, you know, and then, what'd he say, 33 years since he actually entered the political arena. So he's still, he's still very, very, very mindful of things that have happened in the past, and giving us some directions also, and reminding us of some things, you know, that we, as a city, had committed to do, that we probably have not done, but then also telling us some of the things that we have done that we committed to do. But also to remind us that we aren't there yet. We need to continue to move forward. And what's his word? What's the word he uses all the time?
Which one?
Stay focused.
Stay focused, yeah, okay.
And remember to stay focused, because we will, we will continue to do that. Yeah, thank you, Walt. I also, well, at this time, I'm gonna say, you know, the heat is on us now. The heat is upon us. And their temperatures, you know, predicted to be, you know, in the, in the 100s this weekend, so check, if you have elderly relatives and people in your neighborhood, check on them to make sure that they're okay, that they, they aren't suffering from heat exhaustion or anything else like that. Just be a good neighbor and a good family member, and make sure that those persons that need some attention, we'll get it, because it's gonna be hot. We're gonna get over 100 degrees, we're gonna set records probably this weekend. So be careful to look for, at those people. The Carver reunion is gonna be held next weekend, and I encourage you, I'd also like to join Sherri in thanking the city for all the help that they give this, this, this activity. It's a monumental activity, people coming from all over the United States to attend this, this event, and they've always been welcome. The city has done nothing but welcome all the visitors that are coming back home to this reunion. And I, Chief, I encourage us to continue to do the same thing this year. You know, they've done it, and we just can't look for anything but hospitality from our city and our employees and our, and our officials. So let's look forward to that, and make all those people welcome when they do come in this next weekend, next week, or during the week, really. The other thing that we, you know, there's an article in the newspaper, it may have been today, about the total number of break-ins that we've had in cars. And how many was it? 62? 60? 60 break-ins over the past weekend, or last, over the weekend, in vehicles, in people's driveways, and possibly carports, and, but now, I encourage you to be on the lookout. If you have to be a one-person vigilant, be on the lookout for your neighbors and your community. Watch out for people who live in your community and yourself. Make sure that, you know, you keep an eye on your property and properties that are joining you. You can just do yourself a good favor. And if you get up during the night, you know, or whatever, look out, you know, and see. If you hear barking dogs, you know, investigate. Look to see why the dogs are barking. Normally, when dogs bark, something or somebody's in the area, so be vigilant about what's going on in your neighborhood in order to try to protect yourself and your neighbors. And just let, wish everybody a happy 4th of July next week. Enjoy the week, stay cool, and go downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to tell everybody to make sure to take advantage of the new walking and bicycle trail we've had. I've been up there this last Sunday. I walked it again, and there's probably 60, 70 people up, up there walking. It's really picking up, and I think it's really something you'd enjoy, get out and see nature, and it's a really nice thing we have out there. That's all I got.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick items. You know, we, from time to time, get inquiries from the citizens of the city, and even those outside of the city, about what we're doing as a city relative to economic development and residential development. So I'm not gonna offer up any specifics today, but what I do wanna say is that, you know, there are, because of the delicate nature of some negotiations and discussions and things of that nature, there are, we're limited in many respects as to what we can say, but there is a great deal of activity. We actually had a finance committee meeting this morning where we talked some about diversifying our local economic base and, and doing something to help re-energize our residential situation here as well. So please understand and know, those of you that are paying attention to those kinds of things, that we are working diligently to try to do something relative to being active as far as economic development and residential development in the city. So stay tuned. As things get to the stages where we can announce and, and make public, we will do so. Just as a reminder, I think it was. Just as a reminder, I think it was an article in the paper on last week, I believe, as it relates to the property tax laws, there are some who have had the cover of being permanently and totally disabled and haven't had to pay property taxes. Well, if that's you, then you should pay close attention and maybe seek the, the advice of council, or, or seek the advice of someone from the revenue department with the county, just to make sure that you still maintain your exemption, because there are some folks who haven't had to pay in the past who will now, so please play, pay, play, or pay close attention to that, because there have been some changes in the law. We talked some last week about scrap metals, scrap metal recycling. I do want to thank the police chief and Chief Crane and, and the city attorney for aiding us in researching that item. There's a, there is a, what, what we found during the course of our research is that the state law that governs these items is sufficient for enforcement, so for those of you who have historically engaged in that kind of activity and who plan to, just know that that's on the radar for the city, and we, we, we will, to the fullest extent, try to protect our citizens. And the last thing I do want to speak to is our youth jobs program. As it stands right now, and this was effective June 13th, we have 52 total young people that were hired as, in, in a combination of our regular summer hiring and the, the summer youth program that this council instituted on last year. The summer youth program makes up about 15 of those jobs, which is essentially double the number that we had on last year, so we're, we're excited about that activity. It's a good demographic mix, and, you know, as was the case on last year, 100% of those students from Gaston City High School are obviously from, from the City of Gaston, so that was an important item for us, and we, we've stuck to that, so we look forward for another successful year or successful summer for those young people this year. Thank you.
I have no comments this morning, thank you.
I, I too want to say I'm excited about next week with the Carver group coming in, and, and I, I know we usually, we normally have a guy come every time from the state of Washington, so I think I can safely say we have peoples coming from as far away as the state of Washington on the West Coast, and, and probably New York on the East Coast, so they do come from all over the country. There was a study done some time back when we found out that Central Carver, as a, as a black school, had more people who obtained PhDs than any other black school in the state of Alabama, and so that's something we need to be very, very proud of. I do know a number of those individuals who have got their doctorates, and I think there were quite a few of them in my class, as a matter of fact, we had a pretty small class, even though, even though I wasn't one of them, but I knew that's what was coming, but, you know, I, I, you know, I'm proud of the school and, and its heritage, and so we're excited about them coming in next week. Debbie touched a little bit on what we did this morning on, at our finance committee meeting, and I'm, I'm excited about that, too. I, I do know there's a better way to do business. We just got to find that way, and, and this morning was a start, and hopefully the dialogue will continue that somewhere down the road, we're going to come to a happy medium and, and be able to deal with the issues of revitalizing our communities, and again, we've targeted communities, and so we're, we're going to be focused on those particular communities as, as a whole. Again, well, I better leave that alone, too, but Walt was right on target this morning when he said that there were a lot of commitments that had been made that we hadn't followed through on, so hopefully, out of that long talk this morning, we, we got the message, and the message is that we need to follow through on those commitments, and hopefully we'll be able to do that. That's, that's all I...
Fourth of July holiday will be observed next Wednesday, but it will not affect the garbage collection schedule. All routes will be picked up on their regular day, so have a safe Fourth.
Well, are we going to meet next week? I, I said that, you know, we don't have anything on the agenda, do we have, we didn't talk about that upstairs, we didn't have time. We have any public hearings scheduled? I mean, it's a holiday week, guys, take a break. But anyway, we'll see.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So moved.